Hey Carl, this is Ronnie Campbell. We're gonna get started here.
You ready? You gonna get it?
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna get started here in a few minutes and then we'll, we'll go through like the presentation like we shared with you earlier.
Okay.
Thank you.
What? Volume up. It's my craziness, thank you. Whistling? Thank you. Carl, are you able to hear us? Carl?
Uh, yes it is.
Okay, we haven't begun yet, we'll begin here in just a minute, okay?
Okay, and during the times when you're not needing me, and I can seemingly tell it for awhile, I'll probably turn off my mic and my video, so I won't be bugging anybody.
Okay. Yeah, that's yours, this is, this is my little pile right here. This is what we had previously, and this is here tonight, these two. Guys, you have what is here tonight, these two handouts, this one and this one. And then, I brought what we had previously, don't know if we need it or not, here we go. This meeting of the Richlands Town Council, a special call meeting for a work session, is now in session. Let us stand for the invocation. Jan, would you please lead us in prayer?
Lord, we thank you for a beautiful day and for the opportunity to work for the citizens of the town. We ask you to give us wisdom and guidance tonight, Lord, as we review these water and sewer rate schedules. Help us to make the best decision for the town and our citizens. We ask all of this in your name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, council. Counsel, before you is an agenda, and we are on Roman numeral four, approval of the agenda as presented. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Whoever, alright, Jan makes the motion and Gary seconds, is that correct? Is there any discussion on this motion? There being no discussion, Clarence, I would ask a roll call vote.
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Mayor, cannot vote? Yes, Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Thank you, council, it is unanimous. I want to announce that Rick Wood is unable to be with us tonight, as he has another obligation, and Amanda, who's our clerk, cannot be with us either, and we missed him. Okay, tonight, we have joining us Carl Brown. Carl, are you there?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay, thank you Carl. So we have before us Roman numeral five, the water sewer rate, it's a work session with Carl Brown. Would you like to open up Clarence, please?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, if you'll bear with me just a couple of minutes, I wanna just do a technology check and make sure we got everything ready.
Okay.
Mr. Brown, Carl, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you and I can see your slides.
Alright, very good, and sound good up to the council?
Yeah, little bit.
So far? Volume up a little bit? Okay, we'll try that. Mr. Mayor and members of council, first thing I'd like to do is just introduce a few people we have in the audience here. That way, for the people at home, they'll know some of the staff that's here. Of course, we have Mr. Ronnie Campbell, our finance director. In the back of the room, and probably where they belong, some of our other staff, just kidding, of course, we have Jimmy Keen, he's our chief operator at the wastewater plant. We also have E.J. Johnson, the chief operator at the water treatment plant. We have Billy Shelton, he's over the line maintenance for the town. And, of course, I'm Clarence Monday, I'm the interim town manager. And, Mr. Mayor, what are we doing today for this work session? The council requested this a few weeks ago at a regular council meeting. The staff brought to you a lot of information at one time, we realized that. We put a lot on ya, and the council rightfully said, we'd like to slow this down a little bit, get some more detailed information, and bring it back in a work session format, which was scheduled for tonight. And, we put a lot of thought into the presentation. We wanted to make it informative for you as a council, because you gotta make the decision. These are your utilities. Our citizens, both in town and out of town, that's a part of our system, they rely on clean drinking water and reliable sewer service. And our staff, they work diligently every day to provide this vital service. And I kid around a lot of ya about getting a lot of phone calls, and I cannot think of more phone calls than you as a council would get if our drinking water was not safe, and neither do we have good sanitary sewer conditions. So this is something that you as a council have to get right, and we're happy to provide this detailed information for ya this evening. Some of the things that we'll talk about, Ronnie and I will tag-team the first part of the PowerPoint presentation, and then we'll bring in Mr. Brown, when you have any questions or anything that he needs to share from his wisdom. We're gonna talk about, first of all, why the upgrades at these facilities, why that's important. We'll give you some project cost estimates that you got in the beginning, and what the latest figures are. Talk about the funding sources, knowing that it's not all a town expenditure. Rates to support the needed improvements. Answers to some of the previous questions that you had at your last work session have been provided within the presentation. Then you may have, and I'm sure you will have, additional questions and discussion, and then finally, talk about the next steps. Starting with the water treatment plant project. There are mandates that you as a council and the town has for providing drinking water. Out of Dakota, Virginia, the Virginia Department of Health, Office of Drinking Water, they have mandates that's published. It's to ensure that all Virginians have safe drinking water. This also provides the regulatory framework which our staff operates. And then, drinking water and treatment and all the distribution systems are covered in these Dakota, Virginia mandates. And looking at our very own town charter, section 2.3 relating to public works, utilities and properties, it says that the town is empowered to own, operate and maintain water works, for the purpose of providing an adequate water supply to the town and for piping and conducting the same, to maintain all necessary mains and service lines, and also for the distribution of water to its customers and consumers, and it gives you the authority to charge and collect water rates therefore to operate the system. This photograph here is from the plaque, the dedication plaque, that was installed in the water treatment plant in 1939, when the existing facility was constructed. Now, it's not a bad thing, being built in 1939, of course. What counts is the condition it's in, and what the maintenance plan is for those continuous operations. Water treatment plant was last upgraded in 1993. The average waterworks equipment in a water treatment plant typically lasts 15 to 25 years. Richlands is at year 30. We've done very well. My hat is off to the men and women that maintain both our water plant and our water treatment plant. They have been beyond the call of duty in keeping this asset and these assets to the forefront the best they can, but it's simply put, it's time to upgrade these facilities. Picture's worth a thousand words, and these pictures have been taken in the last two weeks, and what it does is to help educate you and also educate our citizens. And by the way, this presentation will be put on the town's website tomorrow morning, and of course, it's recorded on YouTube as well. And we want you to do what you can to educate the citizenry, and as a staff, any way that we can help get the word out, we open for ideas to do that, for it is the citizen's system. These are sedimentation basins that's been patched to make it until the project updates are completed, and you'll see the little oval circles showing some of those patches. This is another picture of the sedimentation basin. This contains excessive sludge from wall water, raw water intake. It is held until released and sent to the wastewater treatment plant for processing. Now, it's normal to get sedimentation. When water is pumped out of the river through the intakes, of course, grime, grit and debris is gonna come into that, but what happens, when this sediment comes in, it has to be stored until it can be processed. And the problem that we have with the existing equipment does not allow that to be released properly, and by the way we have to hold it and release it later on, causes increased cost at the water treatment plant, and then when we send it down to Jimmy and his personnel, it costs them more to treat it and to handle it and deal with it because of the sedimentation. In other words, we need new equipment to help facilitate this removal. This is a picture showing the exterior wall of a sedimentation basin, and I just have one orange arrow that shows cracks in the exterior. Doesn't mean it's in a state of imminent failure, it just means that these cracks are leaking water periodically, and it has to be maintained over time. This is the filtering system. This is the next to last step in the treatment process prior to becoming drinking water. The purpose of these filters is to filter out incoming water to remove the small particulate that has not settled into the basins. The filter media is in need of replacement, and we label that as an imminent repair that is needed at this time. Filter bed rehabilitation is possibly needed due to the pure age of the system. This is a pressure reducing valve, known as a backflow preventer. The problem with that in the existing facility, it's down in a pit, and the current standard says that that needs to be moved, and that would be part of an upgrade process. And I will remind the council and the citizens watching at home, there is a set of engineered plans for the improvements at both facilities that have already been paid for and stamped with the engineer's seal of approval. This is a computerized operating system known as a SCADA system. This is obsolete and in need of replacement, as expected, over a 30-year life of these assets. Filter consoles, our finance director says this looks like some equipment from Star Wars.
Or Star Trek.
Star Trek.
Lost in Space.
These consoles, they still work, they do have their flaws. You'll see an arrow pointing out, some electrical tape that's on a module that is inoperable at this time. The system is outdated, it does its job, but another example of equipment that needs to be replaced, and would be in the stated upgrade. This is the pipe gallery that's 30 years old. The majority of the valves in this gallery need replacing at this time. You can tell with the high volumes of water that goes in and out of the plant, and the pressure that it's under and so forth, these parts have to be reliable and in good repair. This, these are effluent valves. You can notice the picture on your right that has a yellow outlined oval. It just shows one of these valves that's been replaced recently. I think E.J. said each one of those weighs about 200 pounds, and the staff had to be able to reroute the water and be able to change these out. The ones on the left are obsolete, they were taken out of service because they no longer are operable, and you can tell in the illustration on the right, the silver and the red parts that have been replaced due to its daily wear and tear. Think councilman Ratliff can relate to the location of this picture here. This is a booster pump over in the brickyard section. This pumps treated water to the tank that provides drinking water to the hospital in surrounded area, and also out to Tazewell County. This pump has mostly been inoperable for the last four to six years, works sporadically whenever they can get it going. This does inconvenience the staff, makes the system unreliable at times, and costs more staff hours, hence higher cost. It's been sent for multiple repairs, and E.J. tells me that the equipment is so old, the manufacturer does not even recognize it being theirs. Even though it was manufactured by that particular company, they don't even recognize it because the, I guess, age and experience of the workers versus the age of the equipment. This is the airport storage tank, this is a 1 million gallon above-ground storage tank. Hospital relies heavily on this piece of equipment, and so does most of the town. During a recent inspection, it was determined that the tank needs significant rehabilitation. And the next picture just gives you an illustration of the top of the tank. I can say with high confidence that the drinking water that the town provides is clean, it's reliable, and it meets state regulations. However, any equipment needs ongoing maintenance. And I ask E.J. to provide pictures just to show the condition of some of this equipment, and I think anyone could agree that this asset, the access hatch to it, is in need of replacement and repair. Okay, that concludes the photographs and some of the general conditions, and what would be included in the upgrades at the water treatment plant, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
I would like to proceed to the same presentation, but this time for the wastewater facility. It's also mandated by similar sources that I cited earlier. This is out of the Virginia Municipal League Elected Officials Handbook. It says in here that local elected officials, as you know, have a difficult job, being responsible for operating and maintaining a community sewer system, planning for future needs and ensuring that systems operate in compliance with stringent regulations. Federal and state governments have limited money available to assist localities with rehabilitation. And the staff does not deny, all this infrastructure is very expensive. And in the town charter, it says, "The town has to maintain its sanitary sewers, sewer lines and systems, to establish, construct, maintain and operate sewage disposal plants, to charge, assess and collect reasonable fees." And the staff understands the situation that you're in as the agency that would set the rates for water and sewer, as well as you do taxes. And I define this as a balancing act. You have to maintain, you have to operate, and you have to charge reasonable fees. We certainly get that, and we know that's gonna be one of the hardest parts of the exercise. You're probably not in denial that you need to maintain and replace the equipment. It's what rates do we charge and how fast do we get to where we need to go. And we'll try to help you with that the best we can later in the presentation. These are dedication plaques that are in both of these facilities. You can tell the water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, was built in 1960. That's B.C., before Clarence, it was about five years before I was born, so it's still doing its job. It was upgraded last in 1989. Average wastewater treatment equipment typically lasts 15 to 20 years. We're at age 34. So kudos to our staff for making it last as long as possible. And now I'll show you specific examples of some of the equipment that needs replacing at the wastewater plant. This is a mechanical bar screen at the intake where all the raw sewer enters the wastewater treatment plant. These finger-like screen devices help filter out rocks, bottles, whatever, items that come in. These items, due to their age, they've already been overhauled in around 2002, and they're in need of repair. Just think about what they do every day. This is a thickener tank used to thicken the sludge before it goes to the digester. Components within this device include a skimming arm, gearboxes, turntables and et cetera, and they're all original to the last upgrade. If failing, the system will overload with solids, and we will not be able to process waste to current environmental standards. Piston sludge pumps, you can look at these and tell from age 34. They have some rust, they've met their useful life, they have repetitive wear and tear. This is a piston pump, also part of the last upgrade 34 years ago. The gearboxes are worn out, still able to do its job, but it's on a limited time, like we all are. This equipment is expensive and in need of replacement. Aeration basins, it has an electronic monitoring system that's outdated and in need of modern technology, and you see some circles around these electronic boxes. Can't get parts for them anymore. A lot of this equipment, when it breaks down, our staff has to get creative and figure out a way to maintain it, repair it. Sometimes we go to the internet, we find localities that have had sewer plants or water plants where they updated their equipment, and we still have some obsolete equipment that we can get our hands on, but normally we're able to do that, and it's just a matter of time before it's all gotta be replaced. This is an aeration basin where ammonia is removed from the solids. It has the original gearboxes, and parts are no longer available. You see a photograph of an empty aeration basin cell that's used when there's heavier than usual volumes. We cannot get replacement parts for this basin, and it's inoperable at this time. This is the workhorse of the sewer plant, the sludge press. It is a piece of equipment that cost probably north of a million dollars now. I know the first one I bought as a city manager, I remember it was 800,000, and I know they went up a lot since then. But you see a green oval here? This is the mainframe of the sludge press, and it has a lot of rust, and that is at a high pressure point where one of the main rollers is installed. It's just a matter of time before that breaks, and then the sludge press will be out of operation. What's vital about this piece of equipment, it removes a lot of moisture from the solids, and then that way, when we send the solids to the landfill, we're paying for less weight, it reduces our tipping fees, and returns the moisture from that back to the plant to be processed, just like we would any other waste that comes into the plant. This is the underside of that top belt that I just showed you on the same piece of machinery. Everybody see the rust? And if this thing failed, again, it would shut down the operation. These are sludge pumps for the belt press. Again, cannot get parts because of the age of the equipment. Conduit box, heavy rains, guess what water runs down? The conduit, like downspouts, and you can look at the conduit box and tell it has excessive rust from all the water that enters the unit. enters the unit. Electricity, water. Think about it. These are the ice cream freezers. No, wait a minute. It's not the ice cream freezers. It's the ultraviolet lamp control boxes at the sewer plant. This aids in disinfecting, like a black light that helps filter the waste and get the impurities out. This system is no longer manufactured. Our glass house was part of the original 1960 facility. It's used for sludge disposal before it can go to the landfill. It has some broken glass doors, things that can be maintained These are effluent pump stations. You see two of these. These are blue, high-pressure, high-volume pumps that take the discharge from the plant and sends it into the river. These are used when gravity cannot get the effluent out to the river. So this will be when the water's up, and I know that happens here frequently. The good news is, these pumps don't get used a lot, but they're very old, and they probably $300K for the pair to be replaced. And they would be a part of the upgrade that's forthcoming. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to pause here for a second. I know that I've thrown a lot of information at you. I've got the real subject matter experts here in the audience. If you have any questions for any of these staff, now would be a good time to do it, before we go into numbers.
Mr. Malley, I'm going to ask for a 10-minute recess. Need to go to the restroom. Thank you.
Understood. Everyone ready? You ready? You ready, Ronnie? The council meeting is back in session. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll turn the presentation over to our finance director, who's going to walk you through the numbers. And then we'll open it back up for questions. We'll get Mr. Brown on if he has any questions. And this will be the next part, Ronnie.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Hi, hi, town and council. I guess we've gone through a lot of decent pictures and, you know, just things that we've noticed at the plant, and also pictures that EJ and Jimmy were nice enough to pull together for us. But we also wanted, in this session, to talk about some of the financial aspects of what we're looking at with these potential upgrades. In 2020, we had a study done, engineering development study, and the costs at that time were roughly $3.9 million for the water plant and for the wastewater is about $10.9 million. We got those numbers probably right around the time when COVID was hitting. I think we got them in the springtime, COVID hit, you know, right around that time. So that probably delayed some of our timing of doing some of these projects, as well as there were supply chain issues for a number of years, and now we're also dealing with some inflation as well. So we had those numbers refreshed in August of this year. The water treatment plant is coming in at about $5.8 million, and now the wastewater treatment plant is at almost $16 million. When you look at these two together compared to where we were in 2020, that is about a 47% increase that we're looking at. And that's just, you know, in the three years that's passed since 2020. The funding sources we have, if we do have desire to move forward and with these upgrades, we have the opportunity for the Virginia Department of Health grants and loans, as well as Virginia authority loans. Our business partners, as you well know, are Tazewell County PSA. They have 26% of the water and 20% of the sewer. And then the town of Cedar Bluff has 10% of the water and 6% of the sewer. So we wouldn't be sharing, I mean, we would have folks sharing in with these costs for both of these projects. This is just an excerpt from a letter that we received back in 2020. This, at this time, was talking about the funding that we were going to get through loans and grants of $8.1 million and $2.7 million in grants. And it also talks about, in the next highlighted section, there's certain requirements we have to follow to qualify for these loans. And one of those is that we have to keep at least 120 days of debt service in our unreserved balance on hand for each of the funds. This just further highlights that same requirements, and this is talking about adopting a new rate structure back in '20. And then it also talks about the $3.8 million and the $400, that was the loan and grant for the water treatment plant at the time, and talks about the terms and rates that we were, had available during that period.
Can I ask a question on?
Yes, sir.
Just real quick. As our costs go up, the costs go up. Is that right?
The partners?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Yes, that's right. Yeah, it'd be all, the percentages would still be the same when they would share in equal increments of the cost. These are metrics that we will have to follow, and some of the ways they check our credit worthiness and ability to pay these loans. They do an acceptable credit review. There's revenue pledge factors, which includes debt service ratios, days cash on hand, operating ratios. And I know it's a little bit small, but the chart to the left kind of lays out some of those requirements. There's also some general obligation factors, state aid. Your debt service has to be a certain amount versus your expenditures. And then they look at the unreserved or unassigned fund balance as well. Now, I realize these are coming in a little small. You have a handout of these as well with larger print. We were trying to get two slides per page, but one of those metrics that we, that I mentioned was the days cash on hand. In this particular page right here, we're looking at water. The current debt right now, with the current loans that we have, and the projected operating expenses of four months and then four months of debt service, that leaves us, I guess you could call it a surplus, but we'll get, we'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. On the water reserve fund, unreserved balance of about $900K, if you add in the new debt, which is in the next section, that changes it just slightly to about $800, $800K of required unreserved balances. And I just want to, I would caution, I mean, it's nice to say that we have a surplus, but I believe with some of the economic development activities going on, there's potential to increase the capacity at the plant at, or more than it is now. So, you know, it'd be nice to continue to hold on when we have these extra unreserved balances, at least until we have all that Similar schedules for the wastewater treatment. Now, this one is coming up with the current debt service of a shortfall of about $900K in the top section. The, when you add in the new loans, and these loans that I'm figuring in in the second part of these slides is our portion only of the total loan balances. When you add in the additional debt service, it takes it slightly over $1 million on the unreserved balance for the wastewater plant. And so basically, if you were to follow our financial policies that were implemented and proved back in 2019, that 120-day rule came from some of the same guidance that is used for those loans and grants. So with four months of operating expenses and then four months of the new debt, that gets us to that shortfall there. Okay, so looking at what some of the rates would be, we went through several scenarios using Carl Brown's data, compared it to our current rates, also compared it to some of the other localities and counties. As you saw, the water, we have what appears to be a surplus. We are not indicating a change in the rates there. If anything, the rates would probably go slightly down. But once again, I think we need to, you know, caution on the, that unreserved balance for future needs. So in that case, we're at 1987, and this is looking at a monthly customer bill that uses an average of 2,000 gallons. And compare that with the other, like I said, the other townships and counties.
Ronnie?
Yes.
All right. So you're saying if these rates here on our water will pretty much stay the same or less under this new?
Yes, that's what we're proposing at this time, unless, you know, there is a change in those upgrades and we do proceed with, you know, more expansion at that facility. I don't, personally, I don't recommend lowering it at this point, but I don't, there isn't really a need to increase them at this time. I mean, maybe once we get further along with the understanding of what might still be done, then, you know, we'd have to look at potentially increasing those rates. And you can see how we compare to the other folks as well. So we're, we're not at the bottom, but we're not at the top either. So we're, I'd say we're, you know, about two-thirds down from the highest one. Okay. Sorry, I skipped two slides. This is the same scenario, but for the water treatment, wastewater treatment plant. Now, as you saw, we were looking at about a $1 million shortfall if we had that, if we had those loans in place now. The study showed an increase of about 51%. These numbers here, in order to get the reserve back up to at least where it needs to be, we were looking at an additional 20%. And as you can see, that, that would raise the customers' bills about $10 per month if you were to do that. But that, we feel like we need to address the reserve, unreserved balance situation first, and then we can start worrying about the, getting the, where the rates need to be with the upgrades. I do think if we did a little bit more upfront, I think there's some opportunity for some nominal decreases out in some of those future years during the term of that loan.
What's, excuse me, what's the average resident sewer? How many gallons? Is it 2,000 or?
This scenario used 2,000. I want to say somebody threw out maybe $3,500 on one of the earlier presentations.
So we can expect probably about a $20, $25 dollar increase?
I think it was, it was about $14. This, this one's 10, so I think it was going up about 14.
Well, 35 would be almost double, wouldn't it?
At 3,000 gallons.
Yeah, so it'd take it up to...
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the more you use, the more your bill's going to go up. But the per rate, I mean, you've got a fixed component in there, but the per rate amount's not going to change, the per unit cost.
Oh, I know that.
Yeah.
But I'm just trying to figure out what each household's going to have to, expected to pay. And I think, looks like to me, closer to 20 is what I'm... And I think, looks like to me, closer to 20 is what it would come, you know, 16, 17 at least.
Yeah, depending on what the volumes are, that's true. We use 2,000 because the other localities and counties, we had their rates at 2,000 gallons and we wanted to be consistent in that comparison.
Don't quote me on that because the government always has a tendency to be much more than what we expect, okay? So the public, please don't quote me.
Okay. So with that, we would, to get us where we need to be, we would be at one of the higher, with one of the higher localities like Russell. I mean, I guess to note, you know, we didn't do much with the sewer rates. I don't think we even increased them a few years ago. I'm not sure on that, but I don't think so. So it, to get those balances back where they need to be, that's what we would be looking at.
My bill monthly averages about 5,000 gallons. I'm not sure what anybody else here, I mean, I've got to watch that every month, and I've done the math on it. And at 5,000 gallons for my household, it's going to go up about $20. And I'm probably on the high end of, high end of usage.
Yeah.
So.
I will let you know in your packets, a separate packet, I presented the different Excel, it's in some Excel spreadsheets of the different volumes. I think 5,000 is one of the increments I have on there.
With 5,000, that would make it go up 25.
No, I've done the math on it.
Well, if you've got 2,000 gallon, okay, four, that doubles at 20. And then you got the other 1,000, it makes it 25, out of my head.
So I actually was explaining this to somebody earlier. So the minimum, the current minimum is 1793. The new minimum will be 2325, so that's 532 going up right there. Then it's going to raise $3.12 per every 1,000 gallons used. So for me, for example, who's averaging between 5,000 and 6,000 per month, I'm going to add the 532 minimum on. Let's say I use 6,000 gallons at 312 and additional 1,000 gallons, my bill would go up 2404.
Yeah.
And that's at 6,000.
Yeah, that's consistent.
Well, that's what I meant, you know, 25.
Yeah. Okay. That's consistent in the calculation.
So that, we were on the same page, you know, 25.
And most, like you said, most people are probably averaging closer to two to three. Yeah. I homeschool my kids, we're home 24 hours a day, and I use a lot of water.
Yeah, I know, but, yeah, 25 dollars for some people's.
Yes.
Uh, just speaking data, now I'm not looking at the 2021 rate analysis report and models, I'm only looking at new stuff. But I, if memory serves, I think the average residential water usage in Richlands was something like 3,900 gallons per month or so. Sewer usage was much less, and I think it was even in the two, I think it is 2,900 and some thousand gallons. The Virginia Department of Health, which is the agency that does SRF loans for you all, they determined that your average usage for grant and loan purposes is 3,528 gallons per month of residential use. So that $3,500 you're talking about, that's pretty close to what they determined and right in between the two that I calculated.
Carl, this is Rod Curry. Did you say they determined it based on what, did you say rate and? Would you mind?
The Virginia Department of Health?
Yes, sir.
I could not tell you exactly how they determined that. So I'm pretty sure they got your residential use and divided that by the number of customers and divided that by 12 months, and then that would be average.
Right, I'm sorry, I.
Have your use.
Yeah, I didn't state that very well.
Report your data to the agency.
Right, thank you. I, what I was saying, you said for grant and these grant and loan purposes, is that what you said, grant and loan? I think.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't state the question very well, but I got it now, thank you.
And at 3,500 gallons, that bill would go up 1624 per month.
Okay, okay. Everyone, thanks for the input, and go ahead, Ronnie, whatever, or Carl, whoever wants to lead.
That is everything I had as far as the financial aspect of it and looking at the different rates. So at this point, we'd open up if you guys have further questions for me, and then we can open it up to Carl as well.
Sure. So how long until we make our money back? Like, what we have to invest on this? How, are we talking three years, quicker than that? And all the capital we're going to have to invest here, how, at what point will we break even, be back to zero?
On the unreserved balance, you mean?
Um, just on these upgrades, like, or we can do the unreserved balance as well. I was trying to figure out how quick we're going to make our, like, it's easier to justify the investment when you can see how long or how quick it's going to pay off.
I think it really is going to depend on what rate recharge.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't do any sensitivity analysis from that perspective.
Okay.
But we can. And Carl might already have some as well.
Okay.
I have another question. If we stop taking money out for other things, I mean, the bottom line is every dollar that we take out and use it someplace else, that causes the rates to go up. Okay, if we would stop taking money out of the utilities, then we wouldn't have to raise the rates and we could keep, like those folks back there, equipment that they need and we wouldn't be in the spot we are now. What's happened over years and years, we raid those utilities, take all the money out of it, then they don't have the money to operate, can't replace the equipment, and now it's cost us $7 million for not keeping the plant up. If you look, which I've got figures right here, and I'll give anybody a copy, this year alone, where they don't have the equipment they need, they could have if we would stop taking this money out. We took 600, or we are taking this year, we're taking 644,122 dollars from the utilities, moving it to the finance office, and then building stuff like the Greenway and stuff like that on other projects. If we would stop that, they wouldn't have to ride around in rusty trucks, they could replace that equipment, and we wouldn't be in the fix that we are now. Agree?
The, the water treatment unreserved balance is a surplus.
Oh, I know. But if you look, which I have copies for everybody, mark it in yellow where they can see the transfers, this year, we usually take out more, but they were a little better, I guess. This year, we took out close to 140-some thousand dollars.
On which, which?
The sewer.
The sewer.
The sewer. Okay. If we hadn't have done that for the last 10 years, and it was a lot more each year, these guys could have replaced that equipment when they needed to, and we wouldn't be in dire straits now, we wouldn't have the inflation that we got, $7 million now.
Those costs are an allocation of support cost.
Pardon?
That is an allocation of support cost.
What?
The cost that you're talking about, right?
No, okay. In the department, I've got two figures, I've got it marked, to run the department and to pay these guys in the department is costing 595,822 dollars. That's what it takes to run that department. Okay? I'll give anybody a copy of this right here. That's their insurance, that's everything. Okay, after we do that, the department is taken care of. But what happens, the finance office comes down here at the bottom, which I can show anyone, and they take $140,000 and mix it into the general fund and do what they want to with it, and they call it shared, shared expenses. It's not shared expenses. It doesn't take 640,000 dollars to run that department.
I mean, it's like pushing corporate costs down to your departments.
It's what?
It is like?
Well, no, it's called, Ronnie, instead of taking money to supplement your budget, you do a good budget and you don't overspend.
Ronnie, may I say, may I answer this?
Let me interject just a minute. We have discussion, and it's all appreciated. And Doug, are you finished with that one?
Well, I was before I was, I mean.
No, no, go ahead, tell, are you finished?
I was just explaining, and these are the figures, I'll give anybody a copy, it's marked, and most, most towns, what they do, they have one person in the finance office. He's paid probably 60, 70,000 dollars to look over the utilities and to make sure that the billing and all, and we don't even do our own billing, it's farmed out. Okay? We can, most, they're organized to have that one person to pay 60,000 or 70,000, he looks over the utilities and does nothing but the utilities. But instead of doing that and paying that one person, we take 644,122, at least, we 've taken a lot more than that in prior years, and it's destroying the utilities. I'm through.
Okay. I want to say one thing, is, not that we disagree, but we do, and it's okay. I don't think we're taking money, just listen to me, and then she wants to speak, okay?
Well, I've got a copy if you want to.
I believe you, I'll get it in a minute, appreciate that. I don't think we're taking money out of the utilities and wasting it on anything. So let me go ahead and pass the conversation to Laura, she wants to say something, thank you.
Thank you. And feel free to correct me if I'm wrong here, but first of all, you mentioned the Greenway, but you voted yes to proceed with that.
Just a second, please.
Hold on, hold on a second.
Just one more time.
I don't disagree that things should have been kept up over the years, but right now, woulda, coulda, shoulda is not going to help us. We are where we are, and we've got to deal with what we've got to deal with. I personally, myself, spoke to the auditor, and I asked the question about the shared costs, and he explained it to me this way. This is literally a balancing act, and if we stop, because what you're looking at is an estimate, the 600,000 is a rough estimate. It doesn't mean there, it could be less than that because they're billing actual time. And if we stop that cost, and if you want to do that at the next meeting, I'll ask Mr. Monday, myself, to put it on the agenda, let's take a vote on it. But if we stop the transfer, we've taken beans out of this side of the scale, so now we're uneven. We're going to have to put some beans back somehow, and it may not be in a utility, it's going to come and bite people in the butt elsewhere. We're going to have to raise something else to get the beans together, to get it balanced. In this budget, another question that I asked specifically was, is this number too high? And the auditor said to me, it's actually probably too low. He said, you guys are doing yourselves a favor by having this transfer because you were able to take from this. And I asked him, if we stop the transfer, would this lower our rates? And he said, no. He said, you're gonna, this is where the beans came in. He said, you're going to have to raise something else to get that balanced again. I don't disagree that, with the heart of what you're saying, but if we stop the transfer, we're going to be cannibalizing ourselves and we're going to pay for it elsewhere. But if that's what you want to do and that's what you're so adamant about, let me know and I'll ask Mr. Monday, myself, to put it on the agenda.
Could I explain budget, just one more thing? If you do a budget?
Go ahead, yeah, I'm safe, but just.
Sure, keep it quiet.
Yeah, keep it brief, please.
Okay. What you do is, if we'd have kept that in the department, we wouldn't have had this catastrophe that we're having now, and it's cost us $7 million. And it's not beans and beans like that. That's not, that's not a budget. A budget is, if you don't, it's like a household budget. If you don't have the money to spend, you don't spend it. You do a good budget and plan it out instead of spending too much. I'd love to have a Rolls-Royce, but I can't have it.
Basically, what we're doing, we're allocating finance and IT costs back to those departments as if they had.
I know, but the bottom line, Ronnie, is budget. If we did a good budget and planned that budget, then we wouldn't have to take money from the utilities, and these guys would have good trucks, they would have plenty of equipment, and we would not have a problem of inflation of $7 million. And you're talking about beans and stuff, that $7 million destroyed us.
Guys, listen up, I think we're, let me speak, please, all of everyone, we have differences of opinion about the budget and how it works. We are, at this point, we're dealing with a critical issue here of our wastewater plant and water. And we, what we must do is move on, we must move on, must move forward with this topic, regardless of what various opinions are about the budget, we must move forward, and that has been said here. So if you will allow me to invite Ronnie to ask any other questions other than about transfer of funds, and Doug, with due respect, I know how you feel, okay? I'm not agreeing or disagreeing, just a minute, please. I just, I understand differences of opinion. Thank you. So that being said, let's move ahead, I have some questions. Ronnie, I was trying to follow these numbers here. I'm over here on this slide, this simple slide which you have up right now. Richlands is currently rates to support needed improvements. Our current rate is 2603, to be specific. That is for water?
This is, that would be the billing for 2,000 gallons of usage.
Water usage? Okay.
Twenty-six dollars.
Sewer, okay, I wanted to make sure about that because I kind of got lost in the shuffle, and I'm sorry about that. So this is for wastewater, okay? All right, and Tasswell is currently at 3050. Lebanon is less at 1925 currently, these are comparable places. Is that Russell County?
Yes.
All right, 3640. And then Doug did ask a question that I think was a really good one, and that, I mean, all of them are, but it was about the rates that other people have invested in our system and the cost of these improvements they would share with, based on the percentages that they have.
Yeah.
So if it costs us a million, it would cost more than that. If it costs us $1 million and they have 26% of the project, they'll have to pay 26% of a million dollars. Is that pretty much it, simple?
Yeah, that's right.
That was a good question.
I have a follow-up for that question, too. That's the reason I asked.
Okay.
Could I ask a follow-up?
Let me finish my part.
I've got a good one for you.
Okay, well, good. So the proposed rate for Richlands is 3673, and I'm trying to just follow the basic numbers, and please correct me if I'm wrong, or anyone. That 3673 is a proposed rate increase for wastewater if we do the upgrades that we desperately need to do. Is that correct?
Yes.
Right?
And it's looking at a larger increase in the early years to get that reserve balance back up, and then it would probably have some nominal decreases in those later years to reduce it back.
Nominal, right. I appreciate that. And then the other thing is, what meant so much to me, when we had the PowerPoint, I felt like it was in the classroom. You had brief explanations and pictures, and when you said pictures are worth a thousand words, I really appreciated those, and I'm sure we all did. It takes a while if you've never done one to put a PowerPoint together. So there's a lot of thought has gone into this, and what I'm thinking is, when we see these, these rusted situations, it's a shame it got there, but how it got there is just how it got there, it's there. And the issue at hand is, what do we do right now to fix it? And I think we must, just a minute, please, hang tight, we must think in the forward mode, okay? And going back and with this is wrong and that's wrong won't fix it for right now, that's my take. Doug, you want to say something?
Okay, you, you're exactly on point. But what we're doing right now, if we keep doing what we're doing, it's a Band-Aid because we're going to face this again because we won't have any money to keep you guys going in the future. We're taking too much money out, okay? And what, the follow-up to my question is, we have partners, we have Cedar Bluff, and we have the county, right? They have percentage in those, those utilities. When we take money out and put it in the finance, that drives their cost up. So we're costing Cedar Bluff money and we're costing the county money for not, we cost them $7 million right there from not keeping the plant up, much less what we take each year. But every penny that we take and put in our finance department and use it for something else, which we do, everybody denies it, but we do, then we cost Cedar Bluff more, we cost the county more, and is that even, I mean? cost the county more, and is that even, I mean, is that illegal? I'm not sure.
Clarence, would you like to address that?
Mr. Mayor, absolutely. The term illegal, I take offense to that term. Myself, I've been here for three months. I have no knowledge of any of the finance staff or any of our budget practices being illegal. If any of my staff did anything like that, they would be gone in a heartbeat, and I just think it's appalling to be called illegal. If there's any evidence of that, I think it needs to be discussed somewhere, whether it be a public meeting or somewhere else, but I do take offense to that.
Okay, let me, I didn't mean it that way. I meant, it's illegal for us to take money, not any you or any of the employees. I'm not talking that. I'm saying it's not fair to them to take money and use it someplace else and drive their cost up. And I'm not talking illegal doing something wrong. I'm talking, as a partner, is it illegal for us to make, drive their expenses up? That's not what I meant, and I apologize if you took it wrong.
Doug, I'll try to answer that as best I can, and I really think we should move The word illegal, you didn't mean it that way.
No, I didn't mean it that way.
So that, apology accepted. Misuse of money is another marginal term because it implies, it implies intentional, and I don't think that's what you mean.
No.
And I also want to add again, in my time on the council and serving this governing body in this town, I do not believe, this is my belief, and I have seen the budget, that people are taking from the utilities and putting in the general fund and using it for whatever that they want. I don't believe that, even though that is implied. I'm sharing my statement, and I will say, I don't think that's what we're doing. My understanding is, shared resources are simply the cost that it would take to have a bookkeeper for each department to manage it. And if you do that, you're going to have exponentially higher expenses. And simple, that's where I'm coming from. Now, I would appreciate, before we have any back and forth discussion, I think it's pointless, and you've made your point. I've made my point, and I think Laura has made her point. Is anyone else who wishes to speak on this? Anyone else who wishes to speak on this issue?
I have a couple more questions when.
Okay, questions?
Yes.
Go ahead, Laura.
I think one of the most important things that we're doing here is not only educating us, but also the people watching. I love how you guys have put this together. I think it's going to be incredible for people to see. But just to be clear, I, I went to the wastewater. I, I think me, Jordan, and Gary went to water treatment, and then Jordan and I went to wastewater, and I was not, I was concerned, but highly impressed that you guys are functioning in those departments. I could not believe it. But I am concerned for the stability going forward of these plants. So I'm asking, Mr. Monday, in your opinion, do we have, I know we always have an option to say no, but really, do we have an option not to do these upgrades at this point, or is it, are we at a point of, this is pretty necessary?
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate and respect that question. I've been in water plants and wastewater plants from one side of the Commonwealth to the other, and I think you at a point of no return. We used the word imminent at least once, maybe multiple times in the presentation.
And dire.
And dire. You're on borrowed time, and then some. It's a great question.
And just another question, because I, I was not on the council the last, in the last council when they were having these conversations, but I did sit in the audience, and I listened to every single one of them. And they asked really good questions about, do we have to do this right now since we put the, the project off for another year? And they bought us some time on having to increase these rates. Everybody has seen, I mean, I get put in the, the stocks daily over some of my no votes on, you know, I'm very, don't spend money. But when it comes to this, from what I have seen, and if, I would like to know your opinion on it, if we don't increase these rates and we keep it the way it is right now, we have to pay for the upgrades either way. So where, is it safe to say that we would lose the low-interest loans, and we would lose the almost five million dollars in loan forgiveness, and we would still be paying this either way? Is that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the answer to that question is yes, and we're lucky that we have two really good partners. I would expect if the council didn't take action soon, your two partners will probably get a little iron-fisted. I mean, it saves them a lot of money doing it as a shared resource. It's a blessing for Richlands, for Cedar Bluff, also Tazewell County, to be able to share in these improvements. But of course, they have a vested interest in Richlands. They want you to fix the assets because they want to continue a low-cost partnership to them. And remember the slide that was up there a few minutes ago that showed what happened to hesitate for three years?
Mm-hmm.
I don't fault you for what.
Forty-seven percent.
Absolutely, I get it. COVID drove up a lot of that. Mr. Brown, Mr. Campbell and I had the conversation today. We can't sit here and say what the next COVID will be. Will construction costs come back down some? Maybe, maybe not.
I doubt it.
What happens if we have another federal government shutdown? What happens if we have another nine eleven, so to speak, or whatever else with a cost increase? But I think it's your best protection for you and your partner's sake right now to take action and to move the, the project forward. And I do appreciate the compliments about the presentation and trying to give you and the, and the council the information here, but, you know, your infrastructure, you got to take care of it. And it is past time to act, and, and your partners are wanting you to get the project done as well, and yes, be respectful to their cost as well. And the last thing that I'll say is, anybody at home that's watching that has any doubt about the government and what Councilman Ratliff is saying, it's called cost allocation. And there is a G A S B standard, a Governmental Account and Standards Board. There is a G A S B standard that's for cost allocation, and there's also one for businesses that operate in forms other than government, government for cost allocation. But this is done everywhere that I've ever worked. I do think that the town has been very frugal in the amount of costs that we allocate, and that way, we don't have to have a separate billing for the water fund, for the sewer fund, and for the electric fund, and we're able to share those with the staff that you already fund out of the general fund. So if it makes sense to allocate the cost, you're getting the benefit for the sake of the general fund as well, of being able to share those same resources. So remember, money flows in opposite directions as well. Doesn't mean that the town has been doing anything wrong. Doesn't mean the town is doing anything wrong. But I've been in my office at three o'clock in the morning many of the times balancing budgets, and one of the things that I learned very early in my career is you, if you decrease the revenues over in the utility side, the mother fund of everything is the general fund. So if you don't have the shared allocation cost in your utility funds when you get over to the general fund, let's say that amount ends up being three hundred and fifty thousand dollars despite what you've budgeted. Okay, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, what are you going to cut? You just cut the personal property tax, hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in revenue. Okay? Then, is it going to be police officers? Is it going to be to take people out of the utility side up here that work up front, opening the mail, when recording the transactions and everything? You're going to have a hole somewhere in your budget. And the last thing that I will say is, we can all look back, but what we have to do now is look forward. And EJ, if I could have you to hold up some of our infrastructure.
Would you mind to come on up here, please, so we can see, feel, and touch it?
Okay, this is about, it's about looking forward. EJ, if you would, just, if the mayor will allow you to approach the council.
Please, please.
And this is part of your infrastructure.
Here we go.
Is this poison? Can I touch it? Go ahead, tell us about it.
That's actually part of the structure of our main tank that feeds the majority of Richlands with water. When we went to take these pictures, when I opened the hatch, I noticed it was pretty rusted. I just barely touched it with one finger. It almost broke off, so I pulled it out. And that's, that's what our tank.
The tank that holds our drinking water?
Yes, sir.
Let's be clear about that. We drink.
Yes, sir. It does not affect the quality.
I would appreciate it. I'm going to get in here and hand it to Laura. I want you to pass it down like a communion. Please, here, Laura. You take it. I want you to feel it.
That's just a small taste. Jimmy, he's probably worse off than we are right now with this stuff.
Thank you. Now, hold on. I want to, while we're passing this mantle, so to speak, I have a question, and I hate to make you stand. You don't have to stand there. You don't work for me. You work for the town. Thank you. Your boss is that man. Listen, Ronnie, just to be clear about what this rate, proposed rate increase would be to thirty-six seventy-three, for anyone listening, this is not about doing things just to get money. As I understand it, this rate, proposed rate increase, will help pay for the improvements and the restoration of these things that we desperately need, wastewater and water. And that is from the water tank, from the water we drink. Is that correct? If I'm wrong, please correct me right now. I don't want to be in public in saying these things. The next thing is, and I know it was this way, and I need to clarify. How about that, guys? Thank you. Thank you, Doug. Will you convey that to him? Please, thank you. So you can leave this right here. Would you want to put it right here? We need visible evidence. Thank you. I appreciate that so much. Yeah, it's, don't worry about it. I've cleaned up worse, okay? I hate to admit that. Thank you. All right. Thank you so much, both of you. Thank you, Jimmy. My question is this. Early on, when we were talking about this several years ago, I'm sure Doug will remember, everybody who was on this council will remember, we had to raise our rates. We were compelled to raise them in order to be quali, to qualify for these low-interest loans and forgivable grant money, whatever you want to call it. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Is this still applicable?
Yes.
In order to get this money that we could pass up, we must do this for the safety of our citizens, mothers, fathers, children, aunts, uncles, cousins, everybody. Is that right?
Yes, that's right.
We all drink from the same pool? So that means all is all, except, there's no exceptions. All means all. There's no all except for. We all drink from this.
Yes.
All right. So that being said, I'm going to put it up here for, God bless America. Oh, Lord, with my only good arm. So I'm just trying to understand why we're doing it and to make it clear why the proposal is here. We will continue to get this until water will just fall out of here where we're drinking rust, I'm saying. So these, this rate increase is commensurate. It goes with the request, the requirement of the state in order to be eligible for the funding, all the available funding. Am I wrong?
No, you're correct, Mr. Mayor.
All right, but correct me, because I want, I don't want to make an incorrect statement. And I do make mistakes, blue or not, and they're all my fault.
Yeah. They also look at your overall general fund. They look at everything. I mean, obviously, the, the water and sewer funds are going to be the most important, but they also look at the general fund and your stability overall as well.
Our ability to repay what debt we do have to repay. Now, for those who don't understand it, and I was one, I've never had a loan that was forgivable. I've had to repay everything in the private world. What is a forgivable loan?
We're basically talking about the grants.
Forgivable grant? What is a forgivable amount? I mean, what does that mean, forgivable?
It means you're going to receive an amount based on your creditworthiness and obligations to move forward with these upgrades. You will receive a grant that you do not have to pay back.
If we do the right thing?
If you, yes, that's right.
Okay. And what about these low-interest loans? Is that what, am I capitalizing it correctly? You're not on the, you're not on the witness stand. I just need help. So what about these low-interest loans? What does that mean? Compare it to what if I go to the bank and borrow money. What is it for us?
I mean, you're basically getting a benefit from the state to do these projects.
I need to ask you a question before you go.
But you have to meet certain metrics to get these projects.
I could, I'm sorry. It's okay, everybody. Do you mind? I couldn't hear.
You're basically getting a benefit in your interests to move forward with these projects for the benefit of your communities and, and what have you. But, you know, you still have to meet certain financial metrics to still qualify this, and you have to meet them ongoing as well during the period of the loans.
So the Commonwealth of Virginia and its agencies are willing to perhaps grant us, give us grant money which is forgivable? All right. That means if we do the right thing, we don't have to pay this money back.
You'll pay the loan portion back, but not the grant portion.
Okay. Pay the loan, but not the grant. And the loan rates, are those rates competitive, at the very least, to what we'd go? If I just need to go to the bank and borrow ten thousand dollars, I'm going to probably pay a higher rate than what we'd be getting. Is that true or not true?
That would be my understanding. Yes, there, there's supposed to be an incentive for you to do these projects and to get the lower financing for the benefit of your communities.
Okay, so this is a serve, I call it service, it's a part of, being part of the Commonwealth, part of the common good. Is that correct? The common good?
That is correct.
Okay, I won't carry that any further with the concepts of what common good means, but I want to explain it. The common good means for everyone. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
What is the projected timeframe for doing these upgrades?
Mr. Mayor, it's my understanding that normally, when the locality goes into the act of approving the concept, it'll probably take you about nine to twelve months to get all your loan effects in order, to get in the funding pool and et cetera. And then the actual construction period, you know, you have to bid that out as well, but the actual construction, I think, is anywhere from eighteen to twenty-four months, if I remember our conversations correctly. Mr. Campbell, do you remember, construction is about eighteen to twenty-four months, once you go through all the administrative components?
Could I?
It'd still be a while.
I, I have, I have a concern. You know, if it's going to be that long, and these valves, like the one we replaced, there are several of them that need to be replaced. So are these something that would be used in the new upgrade or, or not?
Great question. A lot of the upgrades will be new equipment. I'm sure some of the mainframe components may remain there. They would use what they can, refurbish what they can. But I think your question is excellent to drive home the point of, if you have failure between now and the performance period, that's why you need your fund balance healthy in those funds, because if you have failure, how are you going to pay for it? And Mr. Campbell said it very well. The general fund is going to have to give a moral obligation to the revenues that you pledge for the sewer aspect and the water aspect, and you need to keep all those fund balances healthy, especially the utility funds, in case something fails before you have time to act.
I have a question for EJ. Okay? Is it EJ? Okay, EJ, that piece that you brought up, where is it?
Right here.
When should that have been replaced? Years ago?
Long before it is now.
Okay. If you'd have had money in your fund, that should have been replaced years ago.
From my, from my understanding, I, I can't quote to be a hundred percent factual, but I've been with the town for ten years, and every year that has been mentioned to be fixed.
Yeah.
And it's been put off.
Mm-hmm. I won't mention transfers or anything, but if we left that, if we'd have left that money in your fund, you would have had that replaced.
But that's not, not my department.
Oh, I know. I'm just, I'm just telling you, when, when, what other word can I use for transfer? If we'd have kept that money in those departments, you guys wouldn't have struggled these many years. You would have had what you needed corrected, and these people in town and citizens wouldn't have had to drink the water that that piece came from. And if you look back at all the council meetings for years and years, I preached, I know people get tired of it, utilities shouldn't be made for profit. They should be nonprofit, and they should be kept up well and kept, keep the parts up instead of moving it to another department and using it for other things. I'm through.
Thank you. Go ahead, EJ. Do you want to respond? Listen up. First off, you work for the town. He's your boss. You don't have to respond to anything.
I understand. And this is, this is mainly protecting my guys.
Yes.
And everybody else that works there, because you made a statement that they didn't have to drink that water. I just want to be clear that we send our water off, that's, it gets mandated monthly. Everything that we send out has been perfectly safe. If there hasn't been an issue, everybody will be notified in a timely manner. So it hasn't affected the quality of our water. Our water is a hundred percent safe, and the guys that work there are very diligent in doing their job correctly.
Sure, I didn't mean it that way. I meant. Sure, I didn't mean it that way, I meant...
I just wanted to make sure that the public knew that wasn't...
I know, you guys do a fabulous job, the water's safe. No, I was speaking of the equipment.
I understand, I just wanted to make it to the public that heard it, so they knew it was safe to drink, because it is.
Exactly.
I drink it myself.
To me, it's appalling that we have water plants like that that's not kept up, and you guys don't have what you need. And I preached that for years and years, I guess I misunderstood. If we'd have kept that money in there and used it for what it should have been, we wouldn't have a $7 million gap that's going to cost the town bukooz of money if we'd have kept it up. Okay, that was my contention. I know the water's safe, and you guys do a wonderful job, okay?
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. I think you've answered my question for me about the rate increase, proposed rate increase. And that could vary depending on the usage, that was part of our earlier discussion, whether it's 2,000, 3,000, 4,000. I think we all understand that, you know, the more you use, the more it costs you. So the urgency of the question at the moment, I thought Jan had an excellent question. What if something goes down? Part of, see how, we see in these pictures how many things are wrong. But I thought Mr. Monday had the right answer and the only answer. We must protect ourselves by having enough in our reserves to respond to these imminent dangers. And I kept looking here, and this, you used the word imminent and dire, I saw the word dire. Dire circumstances, we're on the edge, the precipice of disaster, but we're not. Because as a council, I'm saying, speaking, no matter what your approach is to the money, our approach must be for the health and safety of our citizens to deliver potable drinking water and to be able to return the wastewater to nature in an acceptable way. That is the goal. Thank you. Is, yes, Gary?
Ron, our sewer rates will be based on the gallons of water, right?
There's a per unit for every thousand gallons used, but there's also a fixed component as well.
The way it's always been, right? And I do want to say, I get the reports from V D H on the water testing and all. They send them to the building safety department, and they've all been good. So I've never had no problems with them. And when would this start, this new change in fees?
Well, what we had hoped is the next month, we would have a public hearing and looking at potentially implementing rates in January. You know, the sooner we can start moving forward with this, the better.
Well, in essence, are you saying we need the money in order to do the project as soon as possible?
Yes, we do.
Okay, I mean, to put it in plain language, okay? Gary, thank you very much. Doug, thank you. Laura and Jan, Jordan, do you have anything you'd like to ask? Mr. Monday, is there anything you would like to add to this meeting this evening?
Mr. Campbell, could you flip to the final slide, sir, that has the next steps on it? One next, that's it. Mr. Mayor, I do appreciate all the work that you, as the public servants, put in. You go to the grocery stores, anywhere you go, people are always going to hit you up about proposed tax increases, water, sewer, electric, any of that. We certainly respect and appreciate your position. Your job is much tougher than what the staff has to endure along those lines. There are certain steps, of course, that you have to go through. As you know, it's a work session, you can't take any action. If there was anything that you could ask the staff to do, what we would suggest is that you allow us to put this matter on your agenda next week. And if you're okay with that, the staff would do so. We'll have you a report next meeting as to what the next steps are. You'll have your town attorney walk you through the public hearing advertising requirements. We have to meet those. I know it's treated like a tax increase. We'll have to get the timeframe, hopefully between the October meeting and the November meeting. But the earliest I see us being able to have that public hearing would be at the November meeting. And then you could hear from your citizens, get their input like you're required to do, and then hopefully, it would be the goal to get those rates in effect as soon as possible. And the reason you have to do that, so everybody understands it, is you show the Virginia Department of Health, you show the Virginia Resources Authority, and you show D E Q that you're serious about the project. You're actually getting everything in place to start meeting your credit requirements. And then everything can start, once you start collecting the money for that. And then remember, it's that long lead time and everything else. But the staff does believe that it's prudent to get started on those new rates as soon as practical.
Thank you, Mr. Monday. With council's approval, I will ask that you have on our agenda for next week, our regular meeting, the proposals. Thank you. Is there any, Mr. Brown, are you there? Carl Brown, are you still with us?
I am still here, and before you sign off or sign me off, I want to tell you that your staff, and especially Ronnie, have done a fantastic job of presenting the situation to you. I'm really impressed. I don't usually see that. I usually do a lot of talking, I'm able to sit back and listen and make sure that things are working right and sounding right. And they are. So I really appreciate the work and the ability of that gentleman to be able to lead you well. So follow his lead, he knows what the reality is. And then I'll always say that when your costs go up amazingly, and that's what's getting ready to happen, if your rates are only set to pay current costs, obviously, your rates are going to have to go up pretty remarkably to be able to meet the new expenses. Your expenses are going to go up remarkably. Water debt service is going to go up a quarter of a million dollars a year. Sewer debt service is going to go up double that. So three-quarters of a million dollars more is going to be added to your operating and ownership costs. Those costs must be paid. They almost always are paid through user charge fees. That's the way the world works, in this country anyway. Your rates will probably end up being more expensive than many of the junior vicinity in otherwise kind of similar situations. But I bet you none, or almost none of those, are building $21 million worth of infrastructure, investment in the community. When their time comes, and it'll come, then their rates will have to go up too.
Mr. Brown, thank you. The word investment is a key word. We're investing in this community and in the future of it, and all the things, the pieces and parts to which we could possibly be helpful, such as water and wastewater. Thank you for your, for being here tonight, and thank you very much for your input and your compliments to Mr. Campbell. We are very appreciative, Mr. Campbell, of your work. And to Mr. Monday, we're very appreciative for your work. And while I'm here, I cannot leave out our employees back here in the back, who do excellent work. If I carry on too much, you'll be wanting a raise. So please know, we sincerely and deeply appreciate it. And all jokes aside, it is, it's a daunting task, what you do, but so appreciated. Words really don't say it. They just, I would not have a clue what to do in your job, not a clue. And that's why we're all here on this earth to work together, it is part of the plan. Thank you. Now, unless there's any other discussion for the evening, is there any further discussion regarding water and wastewater? I think we've all had our say. Gentlemen, the hands-on-the-ground people, do you guys have anything else you want to add? Okay. May we keep this here, please, in our archives? Are you sure? Okay, it's a little piece of, I get told a lot how I love history, but this is a little over the top. But right now, we need it, thank you. All right, Mr. Campbell, thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, thank you, have a wonderful evening, we wish you happiness and health. Frank is going to disconnect you.
I'm glad to.
Thank you, Carl.
You're welcome.
Say when, Frank. Okay, members of council, I want to thank each one of you, I'll start from my left, Laura, Jan, Jordan, Gary, and Doug. Thanks for your input. While we obviously don't agree on everything, we still can be civil and move forward. And despite all those agreements and disagreements, we must keep our eye on the future. Absolutely must, or we will not survive. And we must, I do, we all believe in this town, if we didn't, we wouldn't be here right now. You would not be here, period. So that's a statement of thanks to everyone here for their input. Is there a motion to adjourn? Gary makes the motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Jan makes the second. Is there any discussion on the motion to adjourn? There being no discussion, Doug?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
This motion carries, it is unanimous.